Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Portland's Voter Forum for candidates for the first district of the Multnomah County Commission. I am Susan Gilbert, member of the Portland League and moderator for this forum. The League is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to making democracy work. We believe democracy works best when voters are informed about issues and engaged in their communities. We are presenting this forum to give eligible voters the opportunity to learn more about these candidates. We are grateful for support from the Carroll and Velma Sailing Foundation, the Weiss Foundation, the League of Women Voters of Portland Education Fund, and our media partner, Metro East Community Media. The first district of the Multnomah County Commission encompasses northwest and southwest Portland, west of the Willamette River, and the central east side to the east of the river. All candidates for this nomination were invited to participate in this forum. All candidates accepted and are here today. We have Kevin Fitz, Megan Moyer, Vadim Mosersky, and Margot Wheeler. Welcome, candidates, and thank you for participating. Under the voter form protocol agreed to by the speakers for this event, each of the speakers will give a two-minute opening statement, followed by questions we have prepared based upon lead positions and lead members' interest. And each speaker will have a two-minute closing. Each speaker will have up to 60 seconds to answer each of the questions. The candidates have previously agreed in writing to comply with these rules and other requirements. To determine the order in which the candidates will present their opening and closing statements and answer questions, we use the Secretary of State's current and previous official candidate random alphabets drawn in every election cycle, which means, Mr. Mosersky, you get to make the first opening statement. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Susan. Thank you, everybody, watching this video as well. My name is Vadim Mosersky. I live in Goose Hollow with my wife and daughter. As an immigrant, I moved around a lot, and I've lived all over the United States. When I came here to Portland, I instantly fell in love with the city and decided to come here and start a family and lead my life. And like many of you, I'm very upset that our local government is failing to effectively act with urgency to address the crises of homelessness, drug addiction, mental illness, and the rising crime throughout our city. And that's why I'm running for office, because I'm the only candidate with the experience of working to create large policies, working in healthcare, managing large offices and large programs, as well as working with unions. I'm a lawyer, and I worked as a senior policy advisor for the Health and Human Services on nationwide policy development for the head of the agency, as well as working on the rollout for the Affordable Care Act. I'm currently working as administrative law judge, where I managed offices and programs both in Houston, Texas, and here in Portland. When I stepped away from management, I rejoined the union, and I was elected to the Union National Executive Board, where I served representing various, about 10 states throughout the country. And I'm also a community volunteer, where I've been the president of my neighborhood association and a coalition of neighborhood associations. I've served on the Disability Commission here in Portland, several police oversight committees, the President of Public Safety Action Coalition, and also very proudly of ERCO, which helps immigrants like myself get by. And so I'm the candidate that can bring accountability back to our government and make sure that our policies are working. And that's why I have the Oregonian endorsement, which said, "Vote for progress and elect Mosersky to Multnomah County Board." I'll make sure to work for you and make sure to work for the next generations to make our city safe and vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitz, you are next. If you would unmute your microphone, you may proceed.
Very good. Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Fitz. I'm a native Oregonian. I was born in Eugene, but I've lived in Portland, Oregon, since 1985. I love Oregon. I love Portland. I, you know, one of my favorite times in Portland was in the 1990s. I spent a lot of time going out to nightclubs, hanging out in the community, and enjoying what the city had become. I am distressed, and I'm in pain. Primarily, I have lost a family member to a fentanyl overdose, and currently, one of my best friends is living on a tent southeast Burnside. He's had three fentanyl overdoses in the last 18 months. And though I'm extremely plugged in and active as a mental health advocate across our system, we've been unable to find any supports or engagement for him. Why am I running for office? In the last 35 years, I have been a public advocate, and all of my work has been to increase the voice of the family member or the user of the behavioral health system to improve the treatment and the recovery of individual struggle. The biggest crisis Multnomah County has is the behavioral health substance use and houseless crisis. And we can choose to lead with compassion and empathy, or we can choose a different route. All of my career has been focused on two things, particularly psychiatric crisis services. And along with that, where do people go after they leave treatment? Where do they go after they leave prison? They seek community. And most of my work, besides bringing psychiatric crisis houses to Oregon, has been to support rehabilitation and community-based projects for individual struggling. I think it's much, the county does a whole lot of other things, but the biggest struggle we have is we have thousands of people who are not receiving services that help them heal and rehabilitate. And that's why I'm running for county. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Wheeler.
Hi, I'm Margot Wheeler. I'm born and raised in Eugene as well. I moved to Portland in 2010 after graduating the University of Oregon with a bachelor's degree in economics and Spanish. I loved living in Portland. I love Oregon, but I am saddened to see the state of our current community, and I believe that I am the problem solver that is best suited to address the situation. I've been a management consultant for over 10 years, working for both firms and independently. I've also worked for Multnomah County for the last five years within Treasury as a project manager. I have the insider knowledge to know what's broken operationally within the county, and I have a plan ready to deploy to fix it. I have this unique perspective of the ground floor operations of the county and know where the disconnects are. I enjoy solving problems. My background is in making change in businesses and nonprofits, so I believe that I am best positioned to make immediate changes within Multnomah County leadership. I'm asking for your vote, because I'm invested in creating a safe community, and I want to continue to enjoy and serve the county around me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moyer, you're next.
I too. I'm an Oregon native. I was born and raised in Salem, Oregon. I've lived in Portland for 22 years. I am proud to be the Public Policy Director at Disability Rights Oregon, and I have been an advocate for most of my career, but I've also been a contractor who's built low-income housing here in Oregon. And I know what it takes to get the project done. I have worked 20 years in human services, which is the social services that health are most vulnerable. I know what it takes to build functional delivery system to provide for the people who cannot take care of themselves. I have been working tirelessly the last two decades to fund a functional behavioral health system, and I am ready to go to Multnomah County and hit the ground running. That is why people like Governor Kate Brown have endorsed me, because they have personally worked with me and know that my background and my leadership is what the county needs in order to put concrete solutions into action. I strongly agree with everyone on this panel that we are in a crisis, but good intentions and pointing out the problems are not enough. Real, concrete solutions with a track record of implementing them here in Oregon is what I bring to the table and why I would be the best next Multnomah County Commissioner in this district.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll get into the questions, and our first question goes to Mr. Mosersky. And here is the question. What, if any, changes in the county's policies for addressing the homelessness crisis would you support?
So first of all, people are suffering in the streets. We hear record-breaking numbers in the most negative way, the most number of deaths in our streets, the most number of overdoses in our streets. The policies that we have are not working, and that's because we're letting people suffer on our streets. The compassionate thing to do is to link them with a continuum of care, which is getting them off the streets into the menu of different shelter options that we have: safe rest villages, sanctioned campsites, high and low barrier, congregate shelters. We have a lot of options now for people to go to and link them to care so that they can get into permanent housing. And that's where we're missing right now. So Washington County, Clackamas County have done a wonderful job of doing that. They've reduced homelessness dramatically. We have not. And so I will work with the changes that the legislature has proposed, especially around Measure 110, to ensure that we get people the drug addiction treatment, mental health treatment, in places that are off our streets, where they are able to successfully complete that treatment and get into permanent housing.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler, you're next.
I support expanding behavioral and addiction services and providing more wraparound connective services that are already in existence in Multnomah County but aren't being utilized. Departments are not talking together, and so there's a lot of inefficiencies, redundancies, and gaps within services, where we need a tactful plan to coordinate and reduce the waste and make sure the dollars are being spent on the individuals in need. I do think there needs to be more coordination with the city of Portland and less politicalization of making bold statements and failing to describe truly how you're going to achieve those goals and operationally within Multnomah County utilizing those dollars. I bring the financial background to bring that transparency, both to taxpayers and to those people who are needing the services. We need to prove that we're providing dollars and services that are intended for individuals suffering on our streets. Thank you.
Welcome. Next is Mr. Fitz.
Yeah, let me just say, the current situation is untenable, and the current situation is toxic. Like I said earlier, one of my best friends of 40 years is living in a tent and has had three fentanyl overdoses. The way our current system is constructed does not help somebody like him. I am in favor of compassionate services. The thing that I'm particularly concerned about is that the national statistics that talk about individuals recovering from polysubstance abuse is grim. The challenges that we have is we have more and more people needing serious services and supports to address their behavioral health and emotional issues. However, the path is long and it's arduous, particularly for those on public benefits. We are not prepared for a community system that encourages and supports these individuals after their treatment is done. I'm very concerned that we are pooling a significant amount of houseless individuals with severe mental health and addiction issues that aren't treated effectively by our current backwards treatment system.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fitz. Ms. Moyer, you're up.
Mr. Fitz is 100% correct. We fundamentally do not have the system to meet these people's needs, and this is what really separates me from some of my opponents, is just to say, "We're going to put them here or there." The services don't actually exist, and they're not going to exist if we wait until the legislature appropriates money. They did not appropriate enough money to divert people on Measure 110. Multnomah County is going to have to step up and do that. We do not have enough placements for people with severe mental illness and substance use disorder. It's almost impossible to find that treatment. I have a clear plan using Medicaid, both the health plan and long-term care, to get all the needed levels of service into our community. I'm the only one with a concrete plan.
Great, thank you. Next question, question two, goes first to Mr. Mosersky. The next commission will be composed mostly of members who have no prior experience there. What ideas do you have to ensure a productive relationship among those new legislators?
Thank you. That's an excellent question, because we need to work together better between the county commissioners, as well as the city and Metro in the state. I have built those relationships over years here, which is why I'm endorsed by several of the current mayoral candidates, including Mingus Maps, Renee Gonzalez, Keith Wilson. I'm also endorsed by several of the former county commissioners and also other county commissioners running in districts four and two. Why is that? Because I've worked with these people. I build trust. I've worked on projects to address the issues that many of you in the audience right now are facing, and that trust is what will get us through. We're already talking about what that plan will be, how will we succeed on the county commission, working together with the city to address the main crises that we're facing? And when I'm in office, I will be able to hit the road running and get that plan into action to address these issues which are facing all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler?
I plan to not only work together with fellow commissioners, but also have better coordination with the departments and the people actually coordinating services and contracting with service providers. In my background in consulting, I bring teams together. I help people find a joint ground to have mutual solutions, and I hold people accountable. I think that that's been lacking with previous commissioners and other local leadership, is there hasn't been transparency on spend and planning. It's been very unclear declarations, proclamations, and I think I have the ability and the will to work together and take the politics and the backgrounds out and just provide functional solutions that provide impact to our community and make this a more livable and safe place to be.
Thank you. Ms. Moyer?
You know, I think really, looking at our track records is a great way to see how effective we're going to be working with other lawmakers and decision-makers. I've been working in Oregon in these policy areas for 20 years. I have close relationships with the health authority, with key stakeholders, with the disability community, with legislators. That's why I'm endorsed by all different levels of legislators, because to fix these problems, we will have to collaborate. The county is a pass-through for state dollars. They set the rules and they set the money. We have to be able to collaborate, and I bring that experience. I passed over 40 bills in my time working in the Oregon Legislature. I sat on Governor Kidz Hopper's healthcare transition team. I was part of the design team for Oregon's long-term care plan. I'm bringing a level of experience and a level of relationships that allows me to be effective day one in Multnomah County.
Thank you. Mr. Fitz?
Hi, very good. I'm very concerned about the lack of effectiveness, the disorganization, the name-calling that the county commissioners have been displaying in the last 18 to 24 months. One of the first things I will do as a county commissioner, I will improve morale, particularly with the bureaucrats that are still there. You may know that we have gone through four or five behavioral health directors in the last three years. Currently, as I speak, we don't have a permanent behavioral health director. One thing I want to point out, I think I have the mass amount of health professionals, particularly ex-behavioral health directors of Multnomah County endorsing my campaign. Public health leaders at our local universities also endorsing me. Like I said, Multnomah County does a lot of things, but the two major things it does are health services and disability and senior services. For the last 35 years, I have fought as an advocate for the disabled, the elderly, and the poor. I think I'm the only candidate that has the endorsements of the people from the disability community who believe I will fight for them at Multnomah County Commission. I think also, too, is that county commissioners, when they don't have answers, they attack each other, and I think that's what we're seeing currently. Thank you.
Question number three, Mr. Mosersky. If elected, what is the single most important goal you hope to accomplish as a county commissioner? You're up first.
Yeah, the single most important goal is to fix the underlying issues that are causing a spectrum of problems here in Portland, from people suffering on the streets due to drug addiction, mental illness, all the way to our house neighbors that likewise are dealing with ramifications of all that. People are tired. They know that our county is not working, and they want those solutions. And so part of this is, once again, using the networks I've already built. I'm endorsed by several people that work in the nonprofit homeless industry as well, people who work with shelter spaces such as Bybee Lakes, because they know that these policies work. They just need an ear on the county commission to make sure that we fund the policies that work. For me, that right there, where I can look at some figures down the road and I see that fewer people have died on the streets, fewer people have overdosed, that my daughter can walk our streets without needing to see people using fentanyl, see people using methamphetamines, and be able to walk safely like I did when I was a child, that right there is why I'm fighting for this office.
Right, thank you. Ms. Wheeler?
The single most important thing that I would focus on is the program underperformance. So that goes with both contracting with these service providers, but also the financial transparency of the dollars flowing through Multnomah County. That includes Joint Office of Homeless Service dollars, but also state and other federal funding. There has been a complete lack of data accountability, both in where those dollars are being spent and what the effect of those dollars are. I believe that it's Multnomah County's duty to both show transparently what you are doing with taxpayer dollars and also what the impact is, so that the community can measure my effectiveness and the effectiveness of Multnomah County. So bringing transparency and accountability is my number-one focus, and I will do that by honing in on how program is delivering and how we're enhancing good providers and also leaving bad providers and holding underperformers accountable. Thank you.
Ms. Moyer?
My number-one priority is to build a functional mental health and addiction system that is backed by Medicaid. We cannot fund this alone. We have to be maximizing federal dollars, and there are ways to do that that we simply are not. 30% of the people who are leaving hospitalization due to severe mental illness qualify for long-term lifetime supports, because they are not going to be able to take care of themselves. Today, we're discharging those people into homelessness for them to end right back up in either a hospitalization or incarceration. That is not only inhumane, it costs tremendous amount of money, and the federal government won't pay for it. My plan is going to serve people so that they are stable and successful in the least restrictive environment they can be, and we don't have unnecessary hospitalizations. We will save money. We will maximize access to care, and we will finally fill the gaping holes in our system so that people can get the right treatment at the right time for them, both for mental illness and substance use disorder.
Great, thank you. Mr. Fitz?
Yeah, very good. One of the things that I don't talk about much, but for five years, I was a hospice volunteer, every Friday night, from 1995 to 2000, and I saw a lot of people pass away, both people living under bridges and people living in mansions in the West Hills. One of my commitments in my life is to serve those who have less. And I think the biggest problem we have here in Multnomah County is we've forgotten that there's an awful lot of people that live in poverty, there are an awful lot of seniors that live in low income, and there are a lot of people with disabilities who aren't seen who are struggling. I'm running particularly to help fight and be a voice for the vulnerable, for the disabled, and the elderly. My career, my leadership, bringing employment and jobs to Multnomah County, changing state laws to help bring effective services. I'm committed to supporting those who have less in Multnomah County, and I think that's really important. Half of Multnomah County is on public benefits, Medicaid, Medicare, and I don't think their voices are heard significantly in the county commission, and I want to change that.
Thank you. You are watching the video or listening to the podcast of the League of Women Voters of Portland's Voter Forum for the candidates for the first district of the Multnomah County Commission. So we are now up to question four, and Ms. Wheeler, you are going to be first this time. What role would you support for Multnomah County to play in addressing the supply of housing in the region?
I think that Multnomah County has a duty to utilize dollars that are earmarked for housing, whether that be through rent assistance. I also think that there is numerous hurdles to housing that, many of them lie in the city of Portland, so my role would be encouraging them to reduce those barriers so that housing is created faster and gets people in services and sheltered as soon as possible. I don't believe that Multnomah County needs to be a mass owner of housing for other people. We've seen that in projects and things, and that can be a slippery slope. I believe that Multnomah County is the interim gap to help people stay housed by helping them with eviction services, helping them with rent assistance, connecting people to job training and jobs. But there is so many wraparound services that Multnomah County can provide that result in providing housing and keeping people sheltered that they're not currently doing. Thank you.
Mr. Fitz, you're next.
Yeah, I don't know if some of you remember, but before we had the Joint Office of Homeless Services, we had an Office of Homeless Services. One of the things I'm very interested in, in this intersection between the city and the county and the metro, who does what best? You know, I try to explain sometimes that the city does safety and the county does services. Now we're seeing sort of a bleeding over of the county, what the county does around housing services. If it were up to me, now one county commissioner can't do it, but I think we should have some concerted discussions of maybe front-loading a lot of this to what I think ultimately will become our regional housing and urban development agency, which would be Metro. I think there's an awful lot of things that Multnomah County has responsible to do, and like I said, number one, and number two, are health services and disability and senior services. I think we should focus on some of the things that we need to do better at, and that's healing people. And I think some of this housing stuff should be moved over to Metro and put under their management. Thank you.
Mr. Mosersky, you're next.
Yeah, so the county has played a hand in building out affordable housing. Sometimes that affordable housing is actually very expensive. And so on the county commission, I'll make sure that the housing that we do work on is not being built at $1,200 a square foot and some of the costs that we've seen so far. And how will we do that? Using my plan to address homelessness, which next year, the Joint Office of Homeless Services will have $412 million to spend on the individuals that are living in our streets to help them off the streets. Once we accomplish that, which I feel we'll be able to do in the next couple of years, that extra money that we're spending can be used toward building out affordable housing. I think the county has some expertise in that, but we want to make sure we partner with developers and private sector to get the lowest cost that we can for the county and make sure we have accountability for how we spend that money. We can't build $1,200, $1,500 square foot housing. We need to build $150, $200 square foot housing, which the partners that I've created over time will be able to do.
Thank you. Ms. Moyer?
Yeah, I'm the only one here who built low-income housing and affordable housing. And I know from personal experience that the cost per square foot is incredibly expensive, and there are ways of bringing it down. Some of those are very concrete. I'm also very interested in bringing the timeline down. We cannot be just looking at projects that take four years from conception to people moving in. We've got to look at buying additional time on low-income and affordable housing units. You know, most expire after 30 years and become totally private sector. We should be buying additional years so that they stay on the market. You know, one of the biggest barriers of converting commercial space into residential space, which I strongly support for downtown, is our building code. We require that if you make a change of use, you have to go to 100% today code for residential on a building that was only built 20 or 30 years ago. I want to work with our state partners and our other local governments to do a conversion code that prioritizes life safety, but will make it affordable and feasible to convert commercial space into residential space and revitalize our downtown. I have the kind of unique experience that is going to come up with creative solutions to fix these problems. to come up with creative solutions to fix these problems.
Great. Thank you. All right. Question number five, and Mr. Fitz, you're going first. What, if any, changes in the county's policies concerning addiction treatment and recovery would you support?
Very interesting question for, right before I decided to run for office, I met with a professor at Portland State University. Why is that? Because one of my goals that I'm still working on is I want to advance the treatment model. We have built substance use disorder treatment systems based on the thirty-day, uh, spin dry system. Individuals suffering from polysubstance abuse, methamphetamine and opioids have severe neurobiological impacts and the route to recovery is a lot longer than thirty to sixty days. I, a Providence behavioral health administrator told me this last week, it takes an average of six or seven times of inpatient treatment to generate six months to a year of sobriety afterwards. Why in the world are we paying six or seven times to send somebody to treatment? We don't send our car to the mechanic seven times before he fixes what's wrong with it. Fundamentally, I believe that this discussion about who leads has to be, we need to do a better job of helping people heal and rehabilitate, and our current systems are not structured and set up like that. And I'm the candidate who has produced community outcomes, psychiatric crisis house and some cutting-edge tools to public service for those suffering from mental and emotional and addiction issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler, you're next.
I support working together in coordinated care. I think a lot of these solutions that have been provided and implemented do not coordinate wraparound services and meet people where they're at. Um, lots of times there's addicted individuals that also have mental health needs. Um, they need to be near housing. People focusing on sobriety should not be near other individuals, um, with low barrier where they're being exposed to drugs when they don't want to be around it. I think that there's been a lack of tactful coordination of all these services where, just like the departments within Multnomah County and the city of Portland and Multnomah County, these services are so siloed because they're not working together. And I think we need to have a holistic approach and look at point A to point Z. And just like Kevin said, it's not a quick fix and quick turnaround. There needs to be long-term supportive care in many different areas for each individual. Multnomah County has the funding to do that. It's just a lack of coordination and implementation.
Okay. Mr. Moserski?
Can you repeat that question, please?
What if any changes in the county's policies concerning addiction treatment and recovery would you support?
Thank you. So Measure 110 has recently been amended by the legislature to allow off-ramps for individuals using the criminal justice system in order to get people into treatment. I fully support that. Um, I certainly, uh, had a forum where over 200 people attended where we discussed that with Rob Nos, Representative Rob Nos and other service providers, what that would look like. The county is in charge of instituting that and making sure that we have a progressive system where judges, the criminal justice system is involved in getting people into the treatment that they need and making sure that they're supported in that treatment. And so I've already, as I said, reached out to those individuals to talk about that, including Recovery Oregon and some of the great, um, ideas that they have in order to implement that and make sure that we have that. Now, we're going to have a sobering center that's going to be built. That's going to be a part of it, but we also need to have transitional housing. We need to have more detox facilities and that's what we need to fund right now, uh, so that when people are, uh, ready to go into recovery, we have those avenues to ensure that they're successful.
All right. Ms. Moyer?
I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Fitz that we do not have an appropriate, uh, treatment model right now. We are treating for the addictions of the nineties. The level of acuity and co-occurring, um, under polysubstance use or both, or dual diagnosis with mental illness really requires that we totally rethink our approach and that it be more medically based. And part of my frustration is that the county has not held CCOs fully accountable for making sure that they are providing their portion. CCOs provide the health plan side of, um, our Medicaid system. And, and I think part of that is that we aren't making sure that we have a full continuum of care. My goal, and I am dedicated to this, I'm not naive, it will take time, is that we need to reach treatment on demand. And what treatment on demand means is when somebody is ready and they say, I need help, you can get them into help that is appropriate for them within hours. That is the goalpost and we're nowhere near. Today, if you are a person with a severe mental illness and a substance use disorder, which a significant percentage of people on the street who have mental illness have both, it is very, it's nearly impossible to find an appropriate placement that can serve both your mental health need and your substance use disorder. We are nowhere near having the system of care that is needed to help people through this crisis and our commitment cannot be short-term. We must be thinking in years and not months.
Okay, thank you. Um, you are first for our next question, Ms. Moyer. Um, so question number six is what, if any, weight should voters give the number of a candidate's financial supporters, the identities of their donors, and the amount of their average contributions?
A lot. Um, because I think it says who's backing them. I also, you know, I'm not going to lie. I find campaign finance to be a real barrier for working regular people running. I wish that Multnomah County had a publicly financed system like the city because I think that, uh, it is a really difficult to launch a competitive campaign if your network is, you know, regular, middle-class or working-class people. Um, I'm proud of my background. I, I'm really proud of the people who support me and I, I absolutely encourage you to look at who gave me money and say, what does that say about me? It's pretty diverse. I think it says, you know, why does she have the support of all of these very different individuals and organizations? But I think it's because they've worked with me and they know me. Um, but I also think it's, um, it's a problematic system that we, uh, one, there's going to be a lot of money spent in this race, then no one's going to know where it came from. And I think that that's wrong. Um, and I don't think that that's how voters want elections to be. We should actually be able to see where every dollar spent for or against the candidate came from.
Okay, great. Mr. Moserski? You're next.
That's an excellent question. I'm very proud that over the years I've built very large coalitions, have met a lot of people in neighborhoods throughout Portland, um, have shaken hands with a lot of people, heard from a lot of people what their difficulties are and try to help. I've been out there advocating for people's needs and, and doing what I can to roll up my sleeves and be part of the solution. Those people have responded now. I'm running for the county commission and I've spent a long time working with a lot of individuals. So when I look at my donors, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of them, I've known them in the past, whether, again, through neighborhood associations or otherwise, uh, walking the streets, talking to people. And so that level of support, that level of trust is, is important because that's what we need in our county. When people say they're not going to find answers or it's difficult to run a campaign, well, guess what? It's pretty difficult to run a government as well. And so the point is to build large coalitions where you work with people and those people know you, they trust you and they support you. And I think it's very telling when you look at, uh, contributions and you see a lot of contributions and that's because those individuals trust me to be in the county commission.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler?
I think campaign finance shows a lot about our system and like Megan said, uh, working people, um, it's unattainable, the, the level of going out and selling and having massive funders. Um, and like she said, we're not going to know where it's coming from. Um, I, I don't think endorsements um, are what people should be focusing on. I think that that is, uh, sometimes, especially when it's an endorsement like the Oregonian, it can be very biased. Um, and you have to see who, who those people are supporting you and why they might be supporting this candidate. Um, it fails to recognize people that are tactfully knowledgeable, that have the skillset to be effective and that aren't political figures or well-known people. So from my opinion, you know, that's why I'm an underdog in this. I do not have time to go and solicit fundraising and I'd honestly rather be fundraising for a charitable organization. Um, but I do want to be out there and communicating that I have the skills and the knowledge to make effective change and I hope that people can see that without flashy advertisements or fancy endorsements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitz?
Yeah, very good. One of the things I think about is who do we want to lead and what does advertising, marketing and commercial art tell us about the moral character that we want to lead? This is Portland, Oregon, and I think that people see through commercial advertising and marketing for what it is. I think more essential is look at the people, the characters, the work that they have done, who have endorsed us. I think that that speaks volumes. Also too, I want to, uh, chime in what, what Margot and Megan said about dark money. All the campaign finance reform in the world we want to do at the legislature that we just passed or going to be passing soon for what Multnomah County, nobody accounts for dark money. Political action committees that don't have to tell you who they are is a huge problem. And no matter what candidate amasses some sort of funding, political action committees in county and, uh, city races have spent, you know, half a million dollars here or there. No individual candidate can compete to fundraise to outspend dark money. It is a huge issue and we are broken. Our system is broken. The candidates are limited to $568, but political action committees uncoordinated could spend as much as they can. It's highway robbery. The biggest problem we have in the United States is income inequality and the poor. Individuals of low income don't have a chance if you don't know rich people. I know forty thousand people in Multnomah County and most of them can barely pay their rent. Uh, if we're talking about socio-economic status, about how to be able to qualify for run political office, it's stacked against the working class and the low-income people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question seven, Mr. Moserski, you're first again. Question is, are you satisfied with the board's current handling of the 24-hour mental health crisis and sobering center? If not, what changes would you support?
No, I, I'm not at all comfortable with it right now. I think it needs to be done quicker. Really, they had a report about four years ago from BHECN, which was a conglomeration of people, both working in the city, the county, nonprofits, as to what that sobering center would be like. As, as some of you online know, essentially the concern ran that sobering center. It closed down because there was too much violence inside that center. And guess what? That violence isn't something that we're seeing in our streets right now. And our county waited over four years to look at how to do that again. And now it looks like we're going to have to wait another year or two before, uh, we bring up that new, uh, center. So we have to look at interim fixes. Uh, there, there's both private and public sector that is involved in having solutions that we can do quickly for individuals that need help in the streets while we're building out this larger facility. And then we need to make sure it's accountable. It's, we got $25 million from the legislature to build it up. We want to get it right. Make sure that people are, uh, get that needs that they, uh, get their needs met, but also that they continue with services and they're not left back on the streets once they go through that sobering center.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Moyer?
Yeah, um, I do not understand the lack of urgency. Uh, we've had a lack of urgency on this issue for four years and that's really unacceptable. I'm nervous about co-locating all of the things they want to bring into one building. I support each of those services separately. I'm, I don't think those are populations that appropriately should mix. I also think it's important to differentiate between what a sobering center does versus detox versus residential treatment or outpatient. And I, I'm again nervous to just offer a sobering center voluntary or involuntary and not be able to guarantee somebody access to detox, especially if we're talking about something like fentanyl or methamphetamine where the period of time it takes to detox is upwards of seven days, if not more, depending on what's going on. Um, that needs to be in a medically supervised environment and it, it needs to be done, uh, safely. And to detox somebody or to begin detoxing somebody and not have access to treatment is life-threatening. And so again, where I support this, I want to make sure we don't just fund one piece of a continuum and not do a full continuum, or we will not get the benefit of that piece. It has to be a whole system. And therefore, you know, that, my, my feelings is let's not commingle populations that shouldn't commingle, but let's also be sure that we are funding every step that's necessary for recovery.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fitz?
I was, uh, in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, I was appointed to be on the Joint Behavioral Health Emergency Crisis Network with, one of the primary goals was our Hooper Detox was not appropriate for individuals who were struggling with methamphetamine and polysubstance abuse, so we needed to upgrade. So we put together and Vadim referred to it, I think the acronym was BEACON, Behavioral Health Emergency Crisis Network. And what happens all the time and has happened over the last forty years that I've been watching city and county government is that we focus on one piece of what we need as a holistic, complete, comprehensive system. And then an elected gets half-informed about it and takes off down the road and ignores the bureaucrat saying we need to build out the system. And that's what we're seeing right now. One county commissioner, thank you that they're taking it under their lead to lead on this, but they're forgetting that there's an awful lot of other inputs that need to be heard. And oftentimes the elected has the political power and the bureaucrat does not have the voice. And I think that's what we're struggling with here. I also think no one that I know is referring to it as a sobering center. I think we're calling it withdrawal management and detox. And some of those are being attenuated at local hospitals. We don't need just a center. We need a system where individuals have a place to go after they leave withdrawal management. And that's not being coordinated. And why isn't it being coordinated? Because the biggest problem in public policy is something has a price tag of three, three, four million dollars and all we focus on is the expensive building location of property and forget the systems that tie everything together. And that's problematic. And that's where we are currently with our withdrawal management process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitz. All right. Question, uh, number eight, Ms. Wheeler?
Okay, I, the behavior, we're still on the behavioral question, right? The, the 24-hour center?
No, you, you answered that one, didn't you?
I didn't answer that one. Sorry.
Can't blame that on the alphabet or whatever. Okay, Ms., you do get to go first for question eight, but, um, you can also answer question seven.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I've been, I agree with, with everyone that it's been woefully insufficient. The lack of timeliness, the funding is there. The funding is sitting in the funds in Multnomah County and is not being utilized. It's not being utilized where county staff themselves are not being deployed and effectively utilized, where community-based organizations are not being paid on time, having their contracts renewed, having their contracts managed. Um, we need to have more accountability on the services being provided and start spending that money in a meaningful way. Um, there's a shift between let's get it out the door quickly and do something, or let's sit on it because we're not ready. And I think that both of those are cop-out excuses where there needs to be a plan of coordination of care. You can't have people detoxing and going straight out onto the street. It increases the likelihood for overdose. And we're seeing that and we're almost, with the solutions that we are proposing and have been doing in a silo, have literally been making the problems worse. We're doing nothing likely would not have been as detrimental to the community and those people suffering as, as providing care. So I want to bring accountability of where dollars are being spent and coordinate. The county is huge. It has many departments and they need to be working together to have those wraparound services so people are successful when they enter care.
Great. Thank you. You, I can tell you're all passionate about this because the chat is saying, stop, stop, stop. Okay, now question eight, Ms. Wheeler, you are first. Uh, the question is, what is your impression of the preschool-for-all program implementation so far? What steps should the county take to ensure full implementation by 2030?
I, uh, think that the implementation of the preschool-for-all program and tax has been woefully insufficient. I actually have worked very closely with that. I have seen the manipulation of numbers to make them look like they're reaching targets. They're spending money on things that don't support kids being in preschool or providing daycare basically so people can get to work. Um, there has been very little accountability on program. Their underspending and their so-called ramp-up is non-existent. They have not shown what they're going to do with this money that's now over $500 million collected. They have not shown what they're going to do with this money that's now over $500 million collected and how they're they're providing services for for young kids and families. It hurts me that Jessica Vedica Peterson, this was her flagship program, and she has not paid attention to both the program or the tax administration. I hope that that is a focus and that the over-collection of taxes in addition, which is hurting middle-class families and costing the administrative costs by the city of Portland and their brand-new, very expensive integrated tax software, we need to bring accountability to that. And it's not been in the forefront, and I will bring it there.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Moserski?
Yeah, in this case, I agree with Margot. We need accountability. We all know that the money is being, you know, first of all, not used well, second of all, just sitting there. The taxes are coming in much higher than originally expected, but the seats are not being built out. So even before you could get kids into preschool, you need to have spaces for them and hire the teachers and make sure that we, or hire the workers and make sure we have enough there. And we're just not doing that. So the question is, why not? Why do we have bad planning? Why is the money not being spent well? And so we need to have more transparency on that, look into it, make sure that if we have way more tax money than we need, that that tax money is, if we can't leave it underutilized, that it goes back to taxpayers because it is hitting middle-class people. And I'm a supporter of preschool-for-all. I think if kids go to preschool, they do better socially. They do better in school. They grow up and they have better outcomes in life. The question is, is our county capable right now of doing that for our kids? And the facts are saying it's not, and that's why I'm running for the county commission to make sure that it will be.
Thank you. Ms. Moyer?
I'm a longtime childcare advocate. I was on the Governor's Commission for Childcare and the Youth Development Council, appointed by the governor, two different governors. And I am really, really disappointed with the rollout and structure of preschool-for-all because I believe in what the voters wanted, and I'm totally dedicated to fixing it. This program should have always been a voucher program. It should not have had the complicated administration of creating slots and and reserving them. And I have some, I have some fundamental questions about the structure. So I would absolutely advocate that it become a voucher. I also want it to be on a sliding scale until it is fully rolled out so that every family in Multnomah County who has children, and you know, I am open to voting for the increase of 0.8% in 2027, if we can get this program together, because I want to serve zero to five. We are losing families in Multnomah County. They are leaving Multnomah County for other counties. And that is horrible for the future of our region. I want to make sure we are subsidizing the childcare for all families. Right now, it's got to be sliding scale. We got to help those who need it the most fully and those who can afford to contribute have it on a sliding scale. But let's hit all families and let's serve these kids.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fitz?
I host a Monday morning public policy learning community called Peer Networks. Four weeks ago, we had a psychiatrist come talk about postpartum depression and postpartum psychosis. Intervening, supporting services for kindergartners or for mothers with babies is where it's at. We need to support early services, early educational opportunities. I don't think preschool-for-all is preschool-for-all. I don't think the program has been administered very well. I don't think the public policy initiative that put it together makes complete sense. I think it needs to be scrapped, and I think we need to redo it. But generally, and I agree with Vadim and everybody else, education and support for preschoolers and socialization of their needs is really, is really important. I just don't think preschool-for-all benefits the people that it's supposed to, and I think it should be redone.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have time for one more question. I'm not getting any flashing messages from Tony that we should stop. So we will go to question nine and we're going to start with Ms. Wheeler. Does your campaign have any personal restrictions on any otherwise legal campaign contributions that a Multnomah County Commissioner candidate can accept?
That's a tough one. I am deeply uncomfortable taking money or endorsements from somebody because I think that that ties your cause to them. And whether the perception that you will work in favor of that group or endorser may or may not be true, but I think that the perception is there. So I have not been going out and soliciting PACs or really focusing on fundraising. My my platform is really to talk about the issues at hand and a functional plan to fix it. I think that fundraising and focusing on taking dollars from people that you don't agree with muckies your validity and what you say you're going to do. I am the type of person that very much practices what they preach. I have not reached out, especially to any current commissioners, asking for their endorsement because I want to have a clean slate. I am a more unbiased person, I believe, that is looking for real solutions and not looking for a political gain or a long-term political career.
Thank you. Mr. Fitz?
Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Does your campaign have any personal, this is underlined in my, personal restrictions on any otherwise, also underlined, legal campaign contributions that a Multnomah County Commissioner candidate can accept?
Well, one good part about that, when we announced that we were running, we had individuals come in front of us and tell us for $200,000 they could run this campaign all the way to November, et cetera. We begged off of that. We don't. We are, our campaign is about intimacy, about personal relationships. And the people working on my campaign are people I've known mostly for at least a decade or more. What we're particularly focusing on is authentic, real journalism that tells the truth and tells the records. If anybody Googles my name, they will see for the last 35 years, I've been building products, service, and tools for those who struggle in the public sector with mental health and substance use. I think the key here is not how much money you can raise to lie to the voters about what a great person you are or what you plan on doing. I think the key is authenticity. Are you a person of your word? And take a look at one's track record. And unfortunately, we're struggling with the journalism that doesn't have enough reporters to tell the truth to the public. And so that is, that is a challenge, especially when other individuals raise or have support from huge political action committees that don't name the donors. So it is a little bit trying and frustrating, and it feels like somewhat a disadvantage if you stay away from corporate money or from corporate professional marketers. But that's the route that we chose, and we believe our campaign has integrity and we believe that we are honest and straightforward with the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moserski?
Sorry, I lost the question there. Is it?
Be happy to read it again. Does your camp?
Let's get to the answer, Kevin. I just forgot the question was.
Does your campaign have any personal restrictions on any?
Yeah, we do. So I'm a judge for the US government. And in that capacity, there's a lot of people that come before me that have certain interests. You know, as in the commission form of government, you definitely will. And we have restrictions in place against people that practice before me to actually influence me in any way by contributing in my campaign. So we're keeping that firewall, so if someone can benefit, they don't contribute.
Ms. Moyer?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't solicit funds from a lot of people because I look at my donor list as a representation of who supports me. Again, I think there are going to be real questions about who's funding some of what's going to happen in this campaign. I don't know. I can't coordinate. I don't know who's doing what. But that's really problematic because we should know where every dollar came from and it should be transparent. I'm, yeah, everything that I have accepted, I am comfortable with. But again, I don't know what's being spent out there to say, I don't know what about myself or about other people. And I think that's really problematic because, you know, you can look at who has donated to us, but that is not the full story. There's a whole other story. And, you know, I, I think voters deserve to know that. I certainly wish that we had different rules that you couldn't hide money because I think everyone should wonder, why is this group thinking this person is the right, right individual? I can't even stop somebody who wants to spend on my behalf. I don't know what they're doing. I don't know what they're going to say, and I don't know who they are. I just disagree with that fundamentally, and I stand by anyone who's contributed to me.
Okay, thank you. Good note to conclude on, I think. All right. So thank you. Candidates may now provide their closing statements. Mr. Fitz, you are up first. Two minutes.
Very good. Thank you. Like I said, my name is Kevin Fitz, and I am running to be county commissioner, District One. I think I have the background, the lived experience, and the network of current and ex-bureaucrats, mental health professionals, and substance use disorder leaders to hit the ground running. The first thing I want to do on day one is answer the question, how many people in Multnomah County got evicted today? And the second question is, what have, what could a Multnomah County done that day to prevent those individuals from losing their housing? I think that's key. In the last week, I have seen three of my senior citizen friends be evicted from their housing. It is now very troublesome. Like I said, I am running to support those who have not a voice, the poor, the disabled, and the elderly. And I think my track record backs up my work over the last 35 years. Thank you so much, the League of Women Voters, and thanks for all my delightful fellow candidates for joining us today. And thank you for having me.
Welcome. Ms. Moyer?
Yeah, I'm running because I really want to make sure that at this critical time, we are putting the right policies and programs in place that balance the need for accountability and to end homelessness, but does not do it without showing compassion and caring. I think you can be accountable, you can be efficient, you can show results, and you can center compassion and humanity. And that's really what my campaign is about. I have 20 years of concrete experience. I really encourage people to look into all of our backgrounds. What have we accomplished? What have we spent our lives working on? Whose background really fits our values? And I really stand behind what I've done with my career and why it really puts me in a position to be able to be effective and deliver on the services I know our community wants and deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moserski?
Thank you. So this campaign is certainly about experience and getting things done. And that's why I'm running for office because what you've heard today is a lot of people can pinpoint the problems but have not worked to provide the solutions in the past. I've been out there talking to people throughout Portland, working with neighborhood associations, small businesses, people like Lisa Schroeder of Mother's Bistro supporting me because she's suffering downtown as so many other people are suffering. And I understand what those issues are, and I've worked on those issues. I know we can provide solutions. Keith Wilson, for instance, who's running for mayor, said we can solve homelessness in a year. And I believe it's possible because I've been walking with him to homeless shelters and I've heard what the issues are and what the solutions could be. That is the experience we're talking about. I certainly take my hat off to Kevin because when I was in the county, when I was on the Police Oversight Committee, he was there advocating for the needs of people with mental illness and people with drug addiction and their needs with respect to that. I met him. I spoke with him. I know he's been doing a lot of work out there. But I've not come across some of these other individuals who say that they have secret plans to solve a lot of these issues. Be out there, tell what your plan is, advocate for it, get things done. That's what I've been doing for many years, and that's what I'll do in the county commission and make sure that we're successful and make sure that we get the results that people want and not more excuses about why we cannot be urgent in responding to people's needs.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler, you have the last word.
I'm running because I have in-depth county knowledge. I have a really unique position, working within treasury, working with all the departments, working with the current commissioners and former commissioners. I think I'm uniquely positioned to bring knowledge to the county commissioners on how functionally Multnomah County works and how it doesn't work. I know where the gaps are. I have a plan to implement solutions. I know what technology and data points they're not capturing. I have a plan to start capturing them and implementing them. I have rapport within the operational team of Multnomah County. They know me as a coworker, as a problem solver, as somebody who they call to fix something or have a provider resource. My background in consulting is very broad. I provide solutions and impact to clients. I would not be successful in my career had I not provided those impacts for clients. And I want to be in a position to have greater impact in Multnomah County and becoming a county commissioner and tying the departments together and working together with local and state government to provide solutions and mutual objectives instead of a political fight or a augmentation of my political status. I really just want to provide effective change in my community so my neighbors and the people suffering around me have care and that our tax dollars are being utilized as intended. Thank you.
Thank you. So this concludes today's Voters Forum with the candidates for the first district of the Multnomah County Commission. We thank each of the candidates for their participation. Audience members, please share this forum recording and podcast with your family and friends. We all need to be informed voters. If you are registered to vote by April 30, you should receive your ballot by May 6. As with all Oregon elections, almost all voters will participate by mailing in their ballots, although in-person voting is available. Check your Multnomah County Voters pamphlet online when the paper copy arrives by mail at your household. To be counted, ballots must be postmarked by Tuesday, May 21 at 8:00 PM. You can also find an official ballot drop box location near you by checking vote411.org or in the Multnomah County Voters pamphlet. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit membership organization, which also takes men, members. We hope this forum was meaningful to you. We welcome you to join or contribute at L W B P D X dot org. This is Susan Gilbert for the League of Women Voters of Portland. Thank you for watching and listening and for being an informed voter. And remember, your vote counts. Thank you.